Good evening and thank all of you for being here today. Today is April 16, 2024. Our thought for today is, as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. That's by John F. Kennedy, the 35th President of the United States. I want to go ahead and officially call this board meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask tonight if Commissioner Henderson, if you would lead us in our invocation and our pledge, sir. I would greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity, but I would like to yield to someone in front of ministry if they would do that for me, please.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason, if you would, would you lead us in our pledge tonight, please, sir? And our, I mean, our invocation and our pledge, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Let us all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us to this meeting once again. We thank you for all that you've done for our community and all that you're going to do. We ask that as we move forward in doing the county business, that you will be here with us, you will go with us, help this board make the best decisions that we can for this community. God, we ask that you continue to allow the love, the unity, to abide throughout this community so that we can be all that you have called and all that you have desired for this community to be, so that we can enhance the quality of life. And so, we thank you, we bless you because you said it, we believe it, and that settles it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Mason, for that. Commissioner, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I might, I would like to poll the commissioners, see if we can amend the agenda to have a discussion about the forever chemicals that were found in our water supply.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
I wish last time to James, when I was here, I think the only meeting that I was here before I was feeling a little bad, James had given us a report. In the report, when I was talking to him, he told us that there was traces of the forever chemicals in our water supply. And so, I think because it is a carcinogen that we need to, as a board, and not a Democrat or Republican issue, that we need to address that and make sure that we can assure to the citizens of Newton County that there is no danger, fact that this carcinogen was found in our water supply.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there, has been a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you, that motion failed lack of support. Back to the original motion that was made by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, is that correct? All in favor? Any opposed? Passage four, oh, thank you. Next is citizen comments, this is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only, agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topic only. Agenda topic only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. We're going to bring up our community liaison, Ms. Hughes, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. As we continue to visit local community nonprofit organizations and shed light on useful resources available in Newton County, tonight you will hear from Rainbow Community Center and Solid Rock Baptist Church. They received $129,320 and $130,000 respectfully in our nonprofit grants. Let's first welcome from Rainbow Community Center and then Solid Rock Baptist Church to the podium.
Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome tonight.
Good evening, Chairman, our Commissioners and others. This evening we here to then our presentation on the funds that we receive for the community. At this time, this is Mrs. Belinda Hardes, and she will be our presenter.
Thank you, ma'am.
How are you doing this evening? Yes, so the shelter did receive funds, and with those funds, we are happy to report that we had a lot of accomplishments during the timeframe that we had the funds available. One of the major things was for us to be able to provide food to the community through our pantry. As you know, our pantry building where it was housed had been destroyed by the tornado. So during the grant period, we didn't get the building back as soon as we had hoped we would, but once we did, we were able to go ahead and get it online. So those images that you see there are the, is the repaired building. You also see some of the equipment that we were able to purchase because during that process, the Department of Health required us to make sure that we came up to code when we were delivering food in the community and while we were holding food because we do meal service. So we did approach the grant holder and asked if we could adjust our funds so that we can make those purchases to make sure that we can continue service to the community. So those are some of the photos that you see there. These are some of the purchases that we made for equipment so that we'll have, be able to keep food hot and cold as required as well. So this is our impact that we had with our pantry. We were able to serve over 140 individuals and families, resulting in over 9,000 pounds of food. We were able to partner and distribute food to other community partners when we weren't able to provide that food directly. So we were able to, which Pastor Lett always does anyway, she does distribute food to community partners when we get an excess of food to help support those pantries and other outreach in the community. That is photos of our grand opening, and that's our, of course, it was bare, but as you can see now, this is this week, the pantry there, it is fully stocked. So we're really grateful to the Board of Commissioners for approving that for us, as well as the additional funds we were able to provide as we requested. We needed support in making sure that we hire kitchen staff, a cook, because Pastor Lett was doing all of the cooking, along with everything else. So we were able to do that, pay for our rent, utilities, also to pay for security, and so it really was a great benefit to us during our time of doing the, doing the, you know, running the operation, we had to pause because, of course, winter was upon us, and we were able to provide support to individuals during the winter months. So it did cause a little hiccup for us, but we were able to serve many more people and, you know, as well as providing food and other things that they needed. Are there any questions?
First of all, just thank you so much for what you guys do in the community, it's greatly appreciated. I know the difficult task that you face, and we appreciate what you do, and we definitely appreciate partnering with you guys.
Again, we thank the Commissioners, thank the Chair and the Commissioners, and trust in us with the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Solid Rock, guys, if you would come on up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, how you doing?
Commissioners, and thank you for the time to be able to come out and share. That was an awesome presentation, by the way. It's good to see that others are trying to make an impact in the community as well. I have to go back just a quick moment. Many of you know our church from being over in Brown Bridge, and we were led to new ground on the east side of the county, and so it kind of put us in a position of rebuilding, but our heart has always been, since the church was started, to do a lot of community outreach and help those in need and those who are maybe the less fortunate, you know, as the Bible talks about. So it put us in a rebuilding phase, and we were, I want to read two verses from you in Matthew seven, verses seven and eight, because this is where our heart was in that rebuilding process. And it says this, it says, "Ask, and it will be giving to you; seek, and you will find; knock, and it will be open to you. For everyone who asks receives, and the one who seeks finds; and to the one who knocks it will be open."
That's right.
And that was our heart at the time because we had taken on new ground as a church, and the ministry needs seemed pretty overwhelming with the space that we had. And we were operating maybe out of an 800 square foot space in our new building. So we were praying and asking God for a larger facility to help administer all the needs that have been coming to us, that we were saying yes to, you know? And so, just at the, I call it a divine timing, we learned about the grant, and it was able to allow us to accelerate building a multi-purpose facility that we could help feed families in Newton County and also help with the homeless. And currently, we're feeding, when we first moved to our new campus, we're feeding about 70, doing about 70 boxes a month, and now we're knocking on the door of 1,000 boxes per month to the families that are pre-vetted in the county. So we do that every single month, we do it weekly, twice a week. And we're also helping with storing food in this building where the grant was able to help us to help administer and also personally provide snack bags for 1,200 kids in Newton County. And we also do that every single month throughout the school year. And we also feed the homeless weekly and then bi-weekly with a hot meal. So this building has been able to afford us the opportunity to really grow in these ministries and help the less fortunate. And we just had big dreams when we moved to the new place, and you guys were a huge part of helping us with that and those dreams become a reality. So we are just so incredibly grateful for what you guys have been able to provide for us, to help us help the community. And I think you all would agree that the needs sometimes can be, you know, too big, it seems, but God always comes through at the right time and meets the needs that are before us. So we're just thankful that you guys were able to play a part in that, and we talk about it a lot amongst our people. And from the bottom of my heart, as the lead pastor and our church, we just thank you for that opportunity. And I know that many of you were able to visit the facility, it's not, it's, we're operating out of it, there's still some improvements we got to make or some additions, we're trying to bring in a full walk-in freezer and cooler and things like that, but you guys were able to help us get to where we are, and we're just grateful, so.
Well, Pastor, thank you so much again, just like I said a few moments ago, to Pastor Lett, thank you for what you're doing in the community, for the services that you're offering the community. I remember a long time ago, on a hot football field, you and I, so, man, so thank you for what you're doing in this community. We greatly appreciate Solid Rock and Tanya Day, we appreciate him and all the energy that he brings to this community as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, guys. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, we have a proclamation this evening, and it will be regarding our Child Abuse Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, which happens to be the month of April. Ms. Kayla Radford will be coming, she's a family advocate and forensic interviewer, but I will read the proclamation prior to her speaking with you. The proclamation reads, "Child Abuse Prevention Month for April. Whereas children are our most valuable resource, and they are also our most vulnerable, all of Georgia's children have a right to be safe and an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Georgia's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas positive childhood experiences like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of our children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created within communities among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business sector, inspiring action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas by providing a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Georgia's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now, therefore, I, Marcelo Baines, Chairman of the Newton County Board of Commissioners in the State of Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Newton County in the State of Georgia. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Newton County, Georgia on this 16th day of April 2024. Mr. Chair, I do present to you now Ms. Kayla Radford."
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Kayla Radford, and I'm here to represent a child's voice, Child Advocacy Center. We're a local nonprofit organization, we're located in Social Circle, Georgia, but we serve Newton and Walton Counties. We're one of 47 child advocacy centers in the State of Georgia, and our mission is to ensure that children are heard, supported, and protected in the face of child maltreatment allegations, and that includes child sexual abuse, child physical abuse, and any witness to a violent crime. So we work really closely with law enforcement agencies and Department of Family and Children's Services to provide forensic interviews, forensic medical exams, family advocacy, and any other support services our families need. In Newton County, last year, we served 127 children, 83 of those cases come from Newton County Sheriff's Office, 26 of those cases come from the Covington Police Department, and the rest come from other local law enforcement investigative agencies that serve children of Newton County. And then another focus of our agency is just prevention and education services for our community, and that's why I'm here today, and I really appreciate you for reading. Oh, yes, please. I just really appreciate you guys and the recognition. Thank you. We just appreciate your support, and we could not do the work that we do without the community and you all, so thank you.
Kayla. Kayla, thank you for being here tonight, and we do understand the importance of the work that you do and how sensitive it is, and we greatly appreciate all the efforts that you do here in Newton County and also in Walton County. And we do have a proclamation that we want to present to you. Thank you so much. Ms. Cooper's, County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, residents of the community. I come before you today with the County Manager's Report. Today, we're going to focus on our first P, the people, and not only the residents, but team members within our dynamic workforce. We're going to talk about infrastructure today, but I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the user-friendly app that we have known as Notified Newton. Notified Newton has 10 categories in which our residents could access this through our portal and express any type of concerns or issues in relationship to infrastructure. This is a first quarter snapshot of the various categories and the requests and complaints by the residents, and it reads as follows. Code enforcement complaint, for the first quarter, the total was 54, so on average, that's about 18 a month. Our road maintenance request, there was 32 for the first quarter, on average, that's about 10.6 a month. Our trash request, there was 31 requests made, on average, that's about 10.3 a month. Illegal dumping complaints, for the first quarter, there was 21, so on average, that's about seven a month. Our pothole complaint, it's about, it was 20, and on average, that's about 6.6 a month. Our streetlight request, there were 17, on average, that's about 5.6 a month. Our street sign request, which was 15, on average, that's about five a month. Our residential properties and subdivision request, there was about 13, that's 4.3 a month, as well as our tree debris concerns, that's another 13 in total, about 4.3 a month. And our other requests made on the app, it was 45, and that's about 15 per month. So in total, there were a total number of 287 requests made through Notified Newton during our first quarter, and on average, that's about 95.6 requests per month. As I stated before, we're going to highlight some of the accomplishments in infrastructure. We're going to start with our Development Services Department, and we're going to look at four components associated with development services. Our building permits issued, our new business license issued, our zoning applications processed, and our development applications. When you look at the building permits for the first quarter, 350 for the first quarter, on average, that's about 117 per month. Associated revenue collected, $479,306 or so, on average, that's just under 160,000 per month. New business license issued, 94 for the first quarter, on average, that's about 31.3 a month. Renewed business license, 532, on average, that's about 177 per month. When you look at the associated revenue collected, $83,740,000 for the quarter, which is about $27,913 per month. When we look at our zoning applications, we had 56, that's about 18.6 a month. And then when we look at the revenue collected, $7,750,000, that's approximately 2583 a month. And then when we look at our development applications being processed, that's 30 for the quarter, which is about 10 a month. And the associated revenue collected, $9,154,000, on average, that's about $3,051 or so a month. So when you look at the total revenue in the first quarter, that's $580,000, and on average, that's about 193,000 or so a month. Fleet Services, this is a workforce unit that maintains more than 500 vehicles and pieces of equipment ranging from our law enforcement vehicles, fire apparatus, to our armor equipment. When you look at what they've done for an entire year from March 23, 2023 to March 2024, there have been about 1,934 repairs or so, which on average is about 161 repairs or services rendered to vehicles per month. Additionally, we purchased 12 new vehicles and two used vehicles over the course of the fiscal year. Public Works and their work order requests performed by district for the first quarter. District one, in January 215, and February 174, and March 158. And District two, 74, in January, 71, in February, 75, in March. District three, 84 in January, 76 in February, and 64 in March. District four, 83 in January, 74 in February, 97 in March. District five, 116 in January, 88 in February, and 102 in March. During the first quarter of 2024, our trash pickup, we've picked up about 4,853 bags of trash and took in just under 37 tons of trash to the landfill. Let's look at some of the Public Works accomplishments, it's paving season, April is here, but when we look at our splotch paving, Sockwell Road, Newton Factory Bridge Road, High Tower Trail, Ashland Farm Road, impact paving of gravel roads, Picket Bridge Road, Water Bridge Circle, and Davis Ford Road is currently in process. When you look at our LMEG resurfacing, just under 14 miles at 13.37 miles. Solid Waste, number of new tags sales, 5,540, number of replacement tags, 40, number of lost mail tags, six, number of hardship tags, 19, number of unusable tags, nine, so in total, 5,614. In addition, Solid Waste was recently awarded the RWD grant to refurbish the recycling bins at the drop-off center. Solid Waste, in collaboration with Keep Newton Beautiful, will host a tire amnesty event on May 25th at the Cook Road Convenience Center. Also, Newton County Water Resources, just recently at the American Waterworks Association Competition, recently won the Best of the Best Taste Test. This team now will compete for the Best Taste at the national competition at the annual conference in California later this year. This concludes my County Manager's Report, I yield back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, and the Courts, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. Mr. Cooper, is their report as far as the forever chemicals, how much of it is in our water supply? From the...
I will check with Mr. Brown, and if there is an issue associated with that, we'll make sure that we get you that report.
Yes, and the question meanwhile we asked it, because the, our President Joe Biden has sent a billion dollars to the United States, to the states, as far as to set up standards, excuse me, for the forever chemicals that's in the water, and the dangers that it poses to each of us individually. And what it is, is that it causes cancer, and it causes high cholesterol and a lot of other health issues. And as I stated, when I tried to get it on the agenda, just to talk about it a little bit, it was that it's in our water supply because the last time that James was here during our work session, I think it's on tape, that I asked about the forever chemical, he said it was in our water. And so, there is a danger to everyone in Newton County, in Walton County, who drinks our water, that need to be addressed, not to borrow, they need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
And so, I don't know what's going on with us, but if there's a danger to our community, then I think if any Commissioner, whether you're Republican or Democrat, it's not about being a Republican, it's not about being a Democrat, it's about doing what's right by our people and being transparent. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to kind of add to the current discussion, I just kind of want to be clear. I think there's proper protocol and procedures to do everything. I think there's proper protocol and procedures to do everything. I think it would be unfair for this board to go into a discussion about something that the actual director is not present, to be able to add value to that conversation. And so I think it is unfair to state that this board does not want to address serious concerns within the community. I believe everybody on this board wants to address serious concerns within this community, even related to the water, but there is a proper time to do that, and I think not having the director here to be able to add value to that conversation would be doing this board a disservice. And so I just want to put that on record, that it's not that this board does not want to address this matter that one of my colleagues brought up, it's just not the appropriate time to actually do so when the director of that area is not present to be able to add value to the conversation. And so I would like, Mr. County Manager, if, Mr. Cooper, if we can, get an opportunity to where maybe we can get that on the agenda very soon, and actually have Mr. Brown here to be able to add to that conversation and be able to address this board and the people of Newton County in regards to what's going on with that area, because he is the subject matter expert. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. All that I said and what I asked for, you know, at the beginning of our meeting was to have a discussion, Commissioner, and discussion was simply to be what was at stake for the citizens of Newton County. It's not only in Newton County, it's just, I think it's in just about every county, come from textile plants and other plants that are already here, and somehow it's getting to our water system. And there's a lot of question that needs to be answered, and nobody's wanting to talk about it. And I'm just close with this, BD boy, which is not, name's an old name that I remember from years, you know, ethylene oxide, and they self-report, billion-dollar plant self-report, and the fumes that came out of the plant, it went all over Sellers Grove, and, and when we learn about it, nobody told us about it. When I learned about it and we found out about it, there was people in Sellers Grove, nobody went, and I can remember, I asked all the board members to go to the people houses, ladies had breast cancer, people had died from it, nobody said a word. So I said this time, hey, I'm gonna get out and do whatever I can to make sure that anybody, everybody knows, whether you like me or not, I will be knocking on your door to make sure that you know that we don't need this in our community, we need to address it, and we need to address it now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Cooper, I would imagine that you're going to have a conversation with Mr. Brown tomorrow, and when you do, if there's any same things, anything significant that you find that he brings to your attention, I would assume you'll send us all an email, is that correct? Great segue to my next statement. I have a scheduled meeting with him tomorrow anyway, so this will definitely be the topic of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Let's come in, let's stop having these secret meetings, let's have this meeting out of the public so that people know what's going on. See, that's the problem, keeping stuff closed behind doors and people suffering and possibly even dying, because once you find out what cancer it is that it caused, I will almost promise you, and I promise a man, that a lot of folks done had it, or got it.
Thanks, sir. Got to seek a motion that will approve the consent agenda, please. Can I get a second? The motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? Pass is five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is number eight, Finance, by our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany White, regarding the March twenty-twenty-four financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I will be presenting the March twenty-twenty-four financial report. March is the ninth month of our fiscal year, so that puts us right around seventy-five percent of the way through our year. So I will start with general fund revenues. To date, our revenues are eighty-one point nine million, so that puts us at a little under ninety percent of our revenues. That is pretty typical for this time of the year, because most of our revenue is brought in during tax season when tax bills are due. And these two graphs just show our revenue by month, and then our revenue budget to Our general fund expenditures, to date, we are at sixty-one point eight million, so that puts us at sixty-six point nine one percent of budget actual, so we are trending a little, a little bit lower than the seventy-five percent at this point in the year. And this is our average expenditures through the month. March was a three payroll month, we have two, three, three payroll months in this year, September and March, so those are why those two months are significantly higher than the other months, and the graph shows just the actuals to budget. So our totals for the year at this point, our revenues are twenty point one million over, but as we progress through the rest of the fiscal year, that will even up towards the end of the year. We have three enterprise funds, our water fund, their revenue to actuals this year to date is six point eight million, their expenses are four point three million. Solid Waste Fund, their revenues are five point seven million, their expenses to date are three point six million, and our Gathers and Factory Shoals Fund, their revenue to date are a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and their expenses to date are a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We have three current active splosh, the two thousand and eleven splosh, we have eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand remaining there, we have one active project there, which is the Historic Jail. Two thousand and seventeen splosh, we have thirty-three point five million remaining in that splosh, and we have several ongoing active projects there. And our two thousand and twenty-three splosh, that's our current splosh, the balance right now is four point seven million, but most of the projects going on here are the bonded projects, where we bonded the funds to be able to start those projects. Our collections to date in February, we brought in one point eight million, so that puts us at four, fourteen point eight million for the year, so that puts us right about two point eight million over what our original projections were. And for our Impact Fee Fund, our current balance there is three point three million. Any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions? Thank you so much.
I'm gonna do the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is just a, the request to renew our contract with Bonfire. Bonfire is the software that purchasing uses for both our bids and our contracts. This is a three-year contract, and this is already an existing contract, it's just a renewal, and so the amount per year is twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
So move.
Can I get a second? The motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number ten, Alcohol License. It's the final reading for District Three, Salem Food and Gas, thirty-five, thirty-eight, Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, for Rahad Devarek, again, District Three.
Yeah, thank you. Hold on, so let me, before you make your motion, so let me clear it up, so Brittany did eight and nine together. Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the final reading of Salem Foods and Gas, thirty-five, thirty-eight Salem Road in Covington, Georgia, located in District Three, Mr. Rahad Devarek. Excuse me if I pronounce his name.
Thank you. Just a second. It was a motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments, you have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please, and remember you have three minutes to do so.
John Dobbs, I live at two eleven Drop Hun Road. I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I seen part of it on my phone, where three of the commissioners don't like to have citizen's comments, because they get bad name. They get cussed at, they get hollered at. Ask the deputies how many times they get cussed at. I was a deputy for thirty years, three out of five days, I got cussed out, because I had to take somebody to jail. And if nobody likes their comments, I got only one thing to say, leave. We get somebody else. This is our, this is our county, the citizens have a right to speak their piece, and if nobody don't like it, that's just on this board, all I can tell you is, pack your stuff and leave. Deputies can't leave, they get cussed out every day, probably. Police officers can't leave, they get cussed out because they had to give somebody a ticket for speed. It don't make no sense to me how this board can say, we don't want any citizen's comments, because they're gonna come up here and they're gonna give us a bad name, they might cuss at us, they might hurt our feelings. But if your feelings get hurt, there's the door. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please, you have three minutes
Thomas Butler, six fifty Philly Drive, Covington, Georgia. I don't want to cuss nobody out like that, but why is it that the, that the committee of y'all, uh, commissioners, can't come through the back door and don't have to go through a metal detector, but people sitting on the other end, we all have to go through a metal detector? And I, I met, I brought this up with you one time before, and you said, well, I see that everybody comes in the front door, and, and I promise you, I'll do, I'll have them coming in. Okay, but you never did do it, because they, they never leave for coming in the back door. I mean, it's a, well, they're, they're commissioners, they're not gonna do nothing, you don't know who's gonna do them stuff, they might be carrying a, a submachine gun under a belt, or damn the bridge lady. I don't know, you never know. So why can't we get them to come through? Because they don't want to walk from behind the building down here around the, and they come in the door that everybody else comes in. That back door will be locked, Turner.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please, you have three minutes
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alinda, Eighty Still Waters Drive, Covington, Georgia. I'm up here because I'm the chair of the NAMI Rockdale Newton Chapter, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I think this is an appropriate time for me to bring this before you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and in light of that, I really would like to see the county partner with the Sheriff's Office and Viewpoint Health to consider what could be done to establish a crisis unit in our community. Oftentimes, when individuals who have mental health concerns, the police are called, the police here do not do anything. We do have the bill called ten thirteen, we have been told on multiple occasions, there's nothing we can do. I had a situation, and this is a personal situation, I have a son who struggles with his mental health, he grants me the opportunity to talk about his condition, and he had a crisis. He left the treatment program, the police picked him up, and they took him to a hotel. The police called me and said, your son is in crisis. I said, okay, well, why are you taken to a hotel for one night? So those are the kind of things we need to be thinking about, we need to be addressing. Other counties are, have things in place. Lawrenceville actually is where the crisis unit is located, but our local police will not take individuals to that crisis unit. So, and, and as, and also, I actually served on the Lawrenceville Co-Responder Team, so for an entire year, I was there going out with the police officers, helping with the homeless, and ensuring that folks were getting connected to the resources they needed. I think it's time for Newton to consider having a facility here so that we can better serve the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a couple announcements. It is now our time for our annual District Two Movie in the Park. We are excited about it coming back again this year. This is our fourth annual year, so we are going to be doing our first movie in the park on May the third, at Denny Dobbs Park. We will be watching Coco, and the whole theme is going to be centered around Cinco de Mayo. And so we're excited about that, we'll have decorations, we'll have music, we'll have movies, food, so bring your lawn chairs, bring your blankets, bring all of that, we always have a great time. We're also going to be doing another one in June for Juneteenth, and then we'll also be doing another movie in the park in July for back to school, and so I'll make those announcements as that time get closer. My last announcement is, we are going to have the District Two Community Cleanup for twenty-twenty-four on Saturday, June the first, at nine o'clock AM. You can pick up free supplies and breakfast at the Keep Newton Beautiful pop-up tent at Denny Dobbs Park, sixty-two, twenty-four, Highway two twelve, at nine o'clock. You can go pick up roadside litter, we'll kind of decide where in District Two we can actually pick that litter up, then place the bag trash in the dumpster at the park until three o'clock PM, and someone will actually come and pick that up. And so join me, our volunteers in District Two, or any other district, if you want to come and help us out. We will welcome all the help that we can to clean up District Two on June first, nine o'clock AM, partnering with Keep Newton Beautiful at Denny Dobbs Park, nine o'clock AM at sixty-two, twenty-four, Highway two twelve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ma'am, you can come on up, Brian, can you go back to citizen comment for a quick second? State rep, yeah, Commissioner, I mean, State Rep Henderson. Yep.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was thinking someone else was coming up ahead of me.
It's not, not a problem.
Didn't realize I was the last one. But anyway, good afternoon, everyone. I'll make this short, so I'll get you directly to the point. I know I have only a few minutes. I've received tons of calls and emails under the Gold Dome at the Capitol about the behavior at Newton County Commissioners Meeting, saying that there's much confusion, and there's several times when there's commissioners that have to be escorted out of meetings by police. These complaints that's calling me and emailing me, they're upset and they're appalling. I've made a, asked my secretary to make a file for these complaints, because they are many. I asked my secretary this, because in the Commissioners Meeting, you should be able to put personal feelings aside and do what's right for the people. We are here to serve the people of Newton County. I am your state representative, and I'm also a chaplain, and I am the chaplain of the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, the largest black caucus in the world, and we should all be able to put our personal feelings aside and work diligently for the people of Newton County. We are here to do a job, and God would not be pleased for us doing anything less than serving the people. Why can't we just show love, deter from confusion, show love toward each other, be respectful to our peers, talk to each other with respect, know how to talk to people even in the community? Because we are voted into office to serve those people in our community. You have to learn to work together in unity in order to get the job done for the people of Newton County. So I have had tons of letters and emails on this topic and I was asked to address this topic tonight and I am here to do so. We are here and we are being neglectful of people of the community and the constituents even having public comments. Okay, public comment is the only voice that the people have by coming up to this microphone, speaking about their community, their concerns and what they hope to have in a better Newton County. Our public is still going to air their differences, even if they have to call me at the Capitol. They're still going to be able to air their differences. But why not allow these constituents to come here at this microphone diligently and air their comments and concerns about Newton County? There are people that are in undeserved areas, they need help and they should be able to address these topics up here at this microphone. So let us embrace a brighter future for Newton County, for our people that we were elected to serve. Thank you and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Brian, if you can revert back to the Commissioners' comment, Commissioner Sanders.
I would like to announce two events that are gonna happen. District Three Community Day will be this Saturday, April twentieth, from one to five p.m. Will be held in the Kroger Shopping Center. Make sure you come out, all friends and family of District Three and also of Newton County. There will be vendors as well as DJ. We're gonna have a lot of good fun, arts and crafts and so more, so make sure you come out. On May second, right here in the Historic Courthouse, is gonna be Let's Talk Housing. From six thirty p.m. to eight thirty p.m., all Newton County residents are invited. This is a listening session where we can hear from the people on how they would like for their Newton County to look and issues that they may have and also coming with solutions. I always believe if you're gonna come with concerns, also come with solutions. So that's May second from six thirty p.m. to eight thirty p.m. right here in Historic Courthouse. There was a statement made that we had to go back into executive session in order to discuss the parks and recreation as well as the West Side Youth Facility. I want to state that it's false. Why? Because I attended the Splos meeting. And at that Splos meeting, the project manager stated that he was not given any more direction to go search for land. The commissioners did not give him direction. We have a project manager here in Newton County. We, he's paid a lot of money, a lot of good money, some good money. The job of the project manager is not, is not the commissioners. The job of the project manager is to go seek land for various projects and to bring it back to us so we can have those decisions, so we can build the parks and recreation and the West Side Youth Facility or whatever it may be. So if the project manager has not come before the board to bring those various things, then how can we move forward? So we do not have to go back into executive session to discuss the West Side Youth Facility or the parks and recreation. We can discuss that right here to give a directive to our project manager since he stated at the Splos meeting, I talked to him personally, that he was not given a directive to move forward. He also stated that various properties that were brought to us that the citizens voted on, the landowners pulled out. The landowners pulled out because he said that all of the landowners did not agree to sell the land. So why would you bring properties to the people and to the Board of Commissioners if all the property owners didn't agree to sell the property? That doesn't make common sense to me to even have the people vote on something that you didn't even have concrete information or an answer from the property owners. That was a waste of the taxpayers' time, a waste of paying a hundred thousand dollars to a consultant. We have to find out what is going on with these projects. That is why I've been constantly asking for us to place it on the agenda, to discuss, to see how we can move forward here in District Three. There was also some statements made about Fairview Community Park. Last year, our sheriff came before us and told us various things we need to do. In regards to the lights being too short, we didn't do it. In regards to moving the gate so that there would be a separate entrance and move it to the other side so the entrance would not come in between the residence, it was not done. So we cannot move forward with anything unless this board agrees to those things with crime as was stated on social media. So things have been stated, but this whole entire board has to agree on those things to be moved. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. C. Well, this Tuesday, next Tuesday, on the twenty-third, at six thirty p.m. at Good Hope, Mr. Fred, Deacon Fred Johnson Church, will be having a community meeting. And we invited the Sheriff Department and others. And in fact, I'm inviting, if she can make it, Representative Sharon Henderson, if she could attend and just talk about what can we, what can we do to help our communities for the road and they want to talk about straightening the road out and talk about Little River Road, at which for months, I've sat up here and I heard them talk to the commission and nobody just seemed like wanted to do something. And I said, "Well, you know, if you're taking all this stuff from me, then you should be able to go out there and try to figure out a way with all, any help, or anybody you can find to help straighten that road out and look at things that have happened on that particular highway." And so this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna talk about it and we're gonna ask our representative if they are unable to come, Miss Sharon, send a representative. We're gonna ask our congressman if he's able to come or send a representative so that we can talk people business and get something done. And last but not least, we're gonna be talking about the forever chemical because I think that's very important. I think it's not gonna go away. I think it has the attention of the President of the United States. What do you call him, Sleepy Joe Biden, Joe Biden? And so I think we need to act on it and see where we at. And hopefully, we can save lives, save health, people getting bad health issues. Because that's a man-made, it's not nature-made. Those are man-made chemicals. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan. Thanks, sir. Guys, I seek a motion that we dismiss. The motion by Commissioner Mason, the second by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Any opposed? All in favor? Extend adjourned. 5-0. Thank you.